Okay, you are good.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to your republic, for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good evening. Welcome to the December 30th special meeting here. Up front, the health department grant application. I'm assuming that's right.
It would be me.
I'm assuming I'm right.
Okay, we tried to present this a couple of weeks ago and I gave you all copies, so I don't have individual copies, but, okay. Anyway, since the beginning of the HIV outbreak and sanctioning of the needle exchange program, we have received funding from a couple of different sources and mainly from the greater, the Health Foundation of Greater Indianapolis, which provides us funding to purchase the syringes and other harm reduction supplies to operate the needle exchange as we go through. So, we have gotten the grant application and we have submitted that. We have been awarded $15,000 to operate for this next year that starts 12/31 to 12/30 of next year. So, this is a money that we get and then we spend it. It's not where we have to, you know, spend it and then get reimbursed. We get the check and then it's received in, into the item and we're able to purchase the necessary supplies that we need. So, first off, did anyone have any questions about the email that I sent a couple of weeks ago on the operation and the numbers and everything that we were doing? Did that help answer some questions?
You know, I saw where you had it broken down. You had some highlighted. The highlighted ones were you said you gave out so many Narcan and then the next number, I believe it was 40 or something. Was that 40 people that said they used the Narcan?
If that was the numbers, I don't have that report in front of me, but...
I don't either. I'm just talking.
Yes, but yes, it was the number of Narcan doses that we'd given out.
I think it was like 75 you handed out, 40 said they used them.
Correct, and then that's because a lot of times we're told that it may take five or six doses on one person, depending on what they have overdosed on and whether or not there's other medical health available. So, yes, it may take more than one or two, three or four doses.
So, how many are you handing to each person?
They come in a kit of two. So, as long as I've got plenty of supplies, I will, we give a kit of two. And then I've also supplied, since we were here last time, Scotts Berkeley's department reached out to us and I brought, I took 48 because it comes in a case of 48. So, I gave them a case. There's been various churches, various service organizations that have requested it. Anytime anyone does request it, we've got people, they're just walking on the street. We had someone from, that was a patient, Dr. Silver Mohans came in the other day and he proceeded to tell us he needed the Norco nasal spray. And so, when we finally realized what he was talking about, he was being prescribed the Norco for surgery he just had and that she told him she should, he should have Narcan available. And so, we explained he didn't use, he was thinking he needed enough every time he took a pill, he used the Narcan. Narcan. So, no, we explained that, we educated them. We're going to be educating, I'm collaborating with Greg and Johnson Fire Department is going to be having several trainings in the upcoming year. One of those is going to be some Narcan that we're going to give kits to them.
So, are the kits you're getting, I know at one time some of those were hypodermic needles. Are you still getting those or...
The ones we get now are strictly nasal, yes.
Because I know before you were getting some that were, had a needle.
We, that was when they first started and the supplier that we get it from, we get a grant from the State Department of Health that I have to write for every year and it's getting more and more competitive. But this last year I was able to get 2,000 doses and that was in April. So, I'm assuming that come about March, we'll get the notice again, we'll get another opportunity to, and depending on how many I have used, because I keep a record of that. But from, I think from April to July, we had given out over 1,000 doses.
Okay, so, I'm not, I'm not, I'm forgetting what I saw on the email, but was that for one month, the 40?
I gave you a report for four different months, August, September, October, and November, because December's wasn't completed yet.
Okay, that's fine. That's what I saw.
And I've got back and go back to the beginning of the year. I just went to the latest.
I was wanting to see how many people were actually telling you they were using the Narcan. And the other thing I saw that was kinda, I won't say disturbing, but the collection of needles, you were saying how many you were collecting out of the boxes. I mean...
We were at a 90-some percent rate.
I know, but out of the boxes, are you considering those returned needles?
Yes, because we are having the people put their individual code on the box so that we can attribute it back to them.
So, they're turning them in in a box in the box.
Instead of bringing them in to us personally.
But I thought, I thought how it worked before was you returned them and we gave you more needles.
That's correct, and we know the clients well enough now and they are, they know that if we, if we cannot justify that they've returned them either through one of the drop boxes or through getting it to us, then we limit and just give them 10 until the next time. And we make sure that, I mean, that's one of the things that we're told we shouldn't have to do that, but because of, we want to please, you know, the people that are supporting us. We want to make sure that, that we are keeping our numbers and...
So, are you getting, because I know, I know my mother is a diabetic and other people are using sharps and needles. How do you determine the needles that are dropped?
That's in separate...
I'm gonna be honest, I drop my needles in a drop box as well because...
Well, that's great. That's what we want and that's what we encourage. And we have a lot of people that will bring them into the office. We had a lady that came in just last week to Austin and her husband had died. She had a whole supply of syringes and I think chocks and some other supplies that she didn't need and couldn't use anymore. So, we've taken them and we'll be able to, if there's ones we can use for the needle exchange, we will do so. Or if there are ones that, for other, we put those up for other diabetics. But we are now keeping track of the ones that are coming in and we are reporting the ones that we're giving out and people are requesting diabetic. Now, a lot of times they're needing the things we don't, we don't supply. We don't have the funding to buy the different pins and things like that. But they're just on a regular insulin syringe and if it's one, and we had one gentleman, that 100 cc one, the size needle he wanted, I only had 50 cc. So, he was a little upset. I said, "Wait, just..."
Take it twice.
Do it twice, you know, and, you know, and that wasn't really good enough for him, but that was, that was all we could offer because that, I had this size he wanted.
I've sent several people down here to this.
And we appreciate that because we want to pay service to everybody, not just to the, you know, to the ones that are injecting the syringes. But what I have here is, this is a letter that we sent to the Health Foundation. So, if you do approve it, then I need that signature. And then this is the script, the thing for the, for you guys to, that is part of, you know, your process. I have the grant agreement again, so Bob, if you did not get a copy, this is the actual...
I got a copy right here. This is the same thing.
Okay, yes, yes, I think so.
I'm looking through this here and question two I've got here. One is, and this is for serine service programming. And it says this grant is to be used for the express purposes of providing support for the serine service program in Scott County. So, really what, I guess, what can you purchase with this money other than serine?
We can purchase any harm reduction supplies, which includes alcohol pads. If we had to purchase Narcan, we could, we could use it to purchase Narcan. We do supply the individual little cooker things because that was part of when the original outbreak started. They were sharing from a tin can or something and that was completely contaminated, so we are providing that. Just anything that, we've got Band-Aids, we've got neosporin ointments.
So, anything that can be...
Anything, we've...
What is, and I'm forgetting, I did not see that email, so I do not have that. I would like to...
I will make sure I get it back forwarded to you.
We did have it in the hard copy too, that's why.
I'll print it and forward that to me.
Yes, I did.
But I'm interested in the facts, I'm interested in, as you want, the numbers. And where are we standing as far as needle? Is it, do we see a decline in it? Are we seeing an incline? What are we seeing there as far as the needle exchange? I mean, we've been into this, what, four years now?
And to me, the sad thing is we're having 18-year-olds coming in and starting out. To me, with all the knowledge, with all the education, everything we have done, meth seems to be the big drug of choice right now. We, we're in, you know, we're in schools as much as we can be. We're trying to educate. But we can't prevent someone from starting that the first time. What we can do is try to prevent them from sharing dirty needles and helping prevent. We are on a slowdown as far as the HIV infections. I think we're at 230-some, maybe. I don't know what the last number is, but, I mean, we were at 200 in the, in the 15. So, you know, we have really contained the number of new cases.
What I, what I see is, it looks to me like it's sustained and leveled off.
We are preventing the spread of diseases, correct. We, we can't prevent people from picking up the needle.
Yeah.
But we can keep them from hopefully getting HIV and Hep C.
And you're working hard to get the needle, but I know we are.
We take the calls.
Always a big...
And I, and I don't think the calls are coming in nearly what they used to be either. Because we've got so much coverage during the day from 8:00 until 6:00 PM. If we get a call, we will go and pick up the needles. And so, it's just the evenings and the weekends that, you know, officers or someone else has to pick up. And with the drop boxes throughout the community.
I would guess, you know, I never heard the word MRSA, but I assume if we're using the needle exchange, we're having less than MRSA. You guys can, I don't know if you even keep track of that.
Not that I know of. The nurses probably do in their reports, but, I mean, I'm sure there is a lot...
There would have to be less, I think, if you use the same needles.
But MRSA is contacted, I mean, you can, and I'm not a nurse, so I'm not, you know, I'm not educated on this. But I know that, you know, you can walk in the hospital and get MRSA.
You can.
And, you know, and everybody has MRSA on their skin. It's just, you know, if you have a immune system that is not, you know, that's not built up and you're not, you're not, you have to clean hygiene and clean supplies.
A walk back, I live at EMS and I think they, they pay for their own Narcan.
They do.
I'm just curious about that. I don't know why they didn't...
Because they can feel for it.
It's also a different strength.
It is, and they do IV as well.
They don't do, they don't have any, nasal, they, Strickland's an IV.
Yes. But the fire departments, you know, and the police departments, when they get called out, because, you know, whoever's first on scene, you know, they will be able to administer it. And I know that at one of the meetings I was in, Tyler had mentioned that the EMS calls were down as far as the overdoses. So, you know, that's getting the Narcan out, that's making the connections, you know, through us. And, and we've got, we've got people, and I mean, I said this from, from day one. We are reaching people by, by being that go-to person in the needle exchange. I know it's controversial. I know it's, there's a lot of people that don't approve. But we are reaching out and it seems like when they get to the point where they have nowhere else to go, they are reaching out to us and we are knocking down doors to get them the help that they want when they're ready to have it and, and it's, it's working.
And it appears to me like science is catching up a little bit on the HIV, HIV, so there might be some open future. But I'm also seeing where there's, we're talking about what's called the lodge. This new thing that our community want to make. It's going to take care of a lot of children.
That's the home in Austin?
Yes.
The refuge.
I would think that would be some, yeah, I'm sorry, refuge. It seemed like that would be a benefit to catch before this happens, maybe, maybe.
If we can educate the children, yes. You know, that's, that's a lot of it, you know, when the kids get to the adult age, that's all they know.
Yeah.
And, you know, unfortunately and sadly, that's, that's what they have dealt with. And when, you know, their life is going, going to pieces, then that's a way to cope. And there's, you know, with the mental health issues and a lot of the different things that's going on, that's, you know, that's their coping mechanism.
And me, reading all of this refuge and I read in the paper, science and I see other states, 31 states are now like doing the needle exchange, if I can believe the newspaper. In me, I kind of look like, how long is this going to be going? I think I brought this up on the meetings and didn't really, nobody really tell me. But I'm seeing things that say there may be a day where we might be able to back away from this and that's, my hope is that.
If you can ever stop the injection drug use.
Well, I know, but I'm saying if, if science is heading in the direction, I think it is, that maybe not a cure, but there may be some way of sustaining this stuff someday.
Like a prevention for HIV.
It may not be necessary, yeah. So, I, I might go someday to be able, for you all to be able to tell me.
I would love that.
Six years down the road, 10 years down the road, this is our goal, but we'll see.
I won't be here then, I guarantee that.
Me either, probably.
Well, the other part, I guess, that, from your report that you sent me, that kind of, just something I probably knew, because I've been on a couple of runs where Narcan was administered before I got there or they said it was, you know, this person passed away, because I don't think they did do that, even though they said they did. I did when I got there, but it still didn't matter. But the thing that kind of bothers me is that 40 people in a month are using Narcan. So, the only reason you would ever use Narcan is if you overdose. So, there's 40 overdoses that aren't reported except to you guys and that's somebody willingly telling you that they did it.
Yes, correct, and there's a lot that aren't telling us.
Oh, I hear it too, that's what I'm saying. So, we have a hidden myth here that people are overdosing and we just don't know it.
Exactly, exactly.
And I know that, I've been on a couple of scenes where the person was revived and then, of course, they came to their, I mean, if anybody's ever seen it, it's like you're dead and then you're alive and you're just ready to get up and go to Walmart. The reality is, is that Narcan is a temporary fix. And you can relapse into an overdose again. And there's been a couple of times where EMS, you know, because the doctor said you can SOR them and SOR means you don't have to transport them.
Right.
But the police officer said, "You're either going with them or you're going with me." Because you're going to overdose again. You're going to relapse back into an overdose. So, that's what concerns me is that people are out there self-medicating and, or family members are self-medicating an addict and they're going to do it again.
And, and until we can get to the very bottom and they decide, I mean, it's just like, I mean, we all know.
Oh, I know, I see.
I know I need to lose weight, you know, somebody else needs to, to, you know, stop smoking or...
I know.
And until you're...
Everybody's got a habit.
Yeah, until you can do it yourself and say, "Okay, I'm done with this." It's not, it's not none of...
No matter how tragic it gets.
Or how much, how many, how much you lose, you know, you lose your home, your family, your children.
I see, it's gut wrenching.
It, it is and to, and we've got, we've got some that, that will tear at our hearts more than others because you know they want to quit, but then something else happens and they're right back in it. Or they, they think they've been gone from Scott County long enough that they are strong enough and certain act or not.
See, that's, that's the other thing, because I've asked the doctors and people, "So, you're telling me it's a disease and it affects the brain and it, how long does it have to be out of your system before your brain finally starts getting functioning normally?" And, you know, it's, it's eight months to 14 months or whatever. Well, some of these people have been incarcerated that long and as soon as they get out of jail, they're right back on, in jail or I see them, you know, somewhere else.
And, and we've got, we've got girls that I've worked with now, I mean, you guys know that. And they will tell you, it's a lifetime struggle.
It's like an alcoholic.
It is, and, and I have even asked them, I said, "You know, why, you know, why do you, when you go to a meeting, do you still have to, you've been clean for five years? Why do you still have to say, 'Hey, I'm an Narcan, I'm an addict'?" And it's just because I will always be an addict. And, you know, to me, I think that there should be a time when you move beyond that and this is your life now and it has nothing to do with that. But it's, there's one thing, and I, it seems like maybe five years is a, is a good trigger point to where they can be clean five years and then something will happen. And they've lived a great life and all of a sudden, five years and, or, you know, six or seven, something will trigger it or something will downfall in their life. And they're going, that goes back to the mental health and the treatment and, and, you know, there's just so many things that, that we can't prevent.
So, the 15,000 here, and that's, and so what is the cost of the needle exchange per year? I'm not sure, is it actually, does this 15,000 cover that per year?
That pretty much, what we pretty much use it for is the purchase of syringes.
And will that cover that for a year?
Yes, for a year, yes.
Okay. And that's, you know, a lot of people, again, don't understand, and the public, it's hard for the public to understand the needle exchange when it's hard for us to understand. Let's just be honest. You know, they, they feel like that the...
We're enabling...
That we are enabling people and they also feel like that they're paying for the syringes for them.
Exactly.
And the one thing, and again, I mean, I struggle with this as much as either one of these other two. And the only thing that I go back to is the CDC, the Indiana State Board of Health, Dr. Jerome.
Surgeon General.
The office is now the US Surgeon General. And when they stand and tell you that this is something that you need to do, I don't know that I'm in a position to argue with their personal opinions. And I know that when Dr. Jerome Madlos is here and, of course, Dan Alcain, the sheriff, and the governor came and signed off on this, I still gotta believe that it's the only choice we got. I don't like it. I've never liked it. But until there's something, somebody can show me something better, I don't know that it did do what we wanted it to do.
And that...
And that was slow the progression of the HIV.
And Hep C, yes.
And the Hep C too. So, I don't, like I say, I'm not in love with the same, but definitely I've got to go with...
That's why we offer all the other services that we do. You know, we've got HIV testing, we've got the Hep C testing, we've got the counseling, we've got the, the care coordination for the HIV positive patients. We offer them their means to get their birth certificates, their, their IDs. We, we're one central location and we've got people that are coming from different counties and different communities that know that, that we can get things done. And that is what, that's, I think that's one thing I'm very proud of, that, that we are able to, to help people once they do decide to make this decision and improve their lives. They're at a standstill because they don't have their ID. They don't, they can't get it. And, you know, there are, there are ways that we can, we can get things for them that, that we're willing to help and go that extra mile that they've not had anyone else pulling for them.
The only thing, the only thing that I'm hearing here, Mike brought up a good point there and I'm telling you, I'm gonna be very honest, what I've heard here, I'd like to, there's got to be a little more that we can put into this because just what Mike just brought up, if we've got 40 people that you, that's out there that is basically overdosing that we don't know about, that's, tell me the difference in that and the difference in the people that was using drugs that we didn't know about on the HIV.
Exactly.
You've got a problem. And the problem, you know, are you, are you, is it hiding that we don't know enough about? And I do think we need to know more about that and somehow, again, I, you know, my thought is, is if 40 people come, and to me, and they tell me why this wouldn't work, but if 40 people come to get Narcan and they come back the next month to get it again, why would you use that? Why wouldn't you have that? Now you know, okay, who OD? You're not getting any more till we know who you administered that to. I mean, if we're passing that out, I think we have the right to say, "Okay, who did you administer this to?" And we need to talk to them.
We, we know to a point. We know to a point, I mean, because it's on the form, of their individual form, that, you know, we, now, if they say they used it on a friend, we don't ask who that friend is because of the...
Why wouldn't we?
Because everything is supposed to be anonymous through the needle exchange and that, that's state law.
I understand, I understand that to a certain point, except this is an epidemic that we're dealing with. And to fix the epidemic, we have to know. And if we know, we're not saying we're going to go arrest them, we're saying we're trying to help you. And in my opinion, I think if somebody's coming and getting that much Narcan and you know that it's being administered to somebody that's old in, I think we've got a better chance of saving their life if we know who they are.
But if we get, if we get...
When do, when do 40 come in? Do you do something to try to help them besides getting Narcan?
Every day.
I mean, you're, okay.
Yeah, I mean, you know, one of the questions we ask is, "Are you ready for treatment?" You know, can we, can we sit down, what can we do right now to get you not to do this? Or an 18-year-old kid, you know, or someone that has just come from jail that I know has not started using yet and he's come, he or she's come to get the needles. I said, "What can we do right now?" You know, "You've been clean for six weeks or whatever." He says, "No, it's not been doing good." You know, "I have to live here. This is where it's all happening. And if I'm going to live here, then I have to do that."
You said lots of drugs, but not really.
And, and...
Bob, some of those people that you're talking about that are getting 40, they're getting in their car and they're driving to Clark County or U of L and seeking medical attention out of the community because of fear of being arrested.
I mean, I believe you, but how do we know that?
Because I've talked with other EMAs and that's, that's the EMA scuttlebutt across the district. I don't know if there's a hard number, but we're watching it go back and forth.
So, they're walking into ERs elsewhere. I mean, I can see that. I mean, I can...
And we can have, you know, there's a lot of people that if, if they have to report, John Jones got two doses of Narcan used, or Sally Smith or whatever, we're going to start having a lot of people dying because they're not going to use it, they're not, for fear of being reported. So, you know, we're, we are doing everything we can to keep them alive because you can't, you can't help someone that's dead. And that's, that's the point that we've always worked with, that, and I don't think we want to be known for...
That's a slippery slope, though.
But I don't think we want to be known for a community that's got, you know...
But regardless, by law, you can't divulge names.
Correct, yes.
And then, and I'm not, again, I guess I'm not, don't take me wrong, I, I don't think we or anybody would have to, need to know the name other than the health department. And the health department is in business of helping the people. I don't think that would, you know, I think at that point you at least have an opportunity to go to them and say, "Hey, you know, what can we do?" And, because there may be 40 people out there that we don't even know that's, that are Narcan and keep them alive that we don't even know exists. So, at that point, when you start looking at these whole numbers, then your numbers is not true.
But, but that's 40 doses, but then, but then that can be, you know, used on six people.
Well, you said, that's true, but I'll, let me, let me tell you something. EMS will tell you not to administer more. If I'm a first responder on my own scene, two Narcans is all I'd give somebody. And the EMS will call dispatch and tell them, tell them not to get any more than two. So, somebody's giving six or seven to one person, then they're, they're, they don't know what they're doing.
That, that's true.
The other part of that is that, again, I think there's two avenues for addicts. One of them is they're, they're going to walk into your office and you're going to get them help. The other one is that they're going to get arrested and they're going to get into the legal process then and they're going to get, they, they can possibly have a chance to get help there. But if they're sitting at home, self-medicating and then self-Narcan or self, they're not getting any help. You know, so we're, again, you know, helping or, you know, initiating the whole, the whole process. I mean, from giving the needle to giving the Narcan, and give them, give them the tools to do it. I mean, I just, they're not gonna get help unless they're in two places. They walk into your office, or they, they get arrested, and they're in the legal process. So, the rest of it, I don't have an answer for, but...
That, you know, and I'm, I'm kinda with it, I don't think there is a right answer. We're just, let's make consider the best way of, I'm gonna vote, or you want to? All right, we could argue, not argue, but discuss, it is. I mean, you, you know, the discussion on this could last for six weeks.
That's ready for us.
Yeah, it is, it's something that, uh, you know, if I had that magic wand, I would certainly use it, but we don't have that. And, you know, I, I feel for the people that's addicted, I feel for the people's families that have people that are addicted, and, uh, we all wanna do the right thing, so... All right, here a motion upon this grant application, uh, it's got County Health Department that it could create a fifteen thousand dollar supply to be used for the syringe service program for the 2020 year.
I will make the motion, uh, affirmative, so they have the grant for fifteen thousand dollars first of all.
All right, the motion's been made to allow them to accept the grant of fifteen thousand dollars right here a second.
I can't second that, so...
Well, I will second it, I'm gonna tell you that it's just like I said before, I, I struggle with this and struggle with it, but again, I've got to believe the people that's, uh, passing this down to us, so I, I will second it, I will say this, and believe me when I say this. Uh, I'm kinda like Johnson, and so there has got to come into this at some point, and I've got to see who will move in that direction. And, uh, if not, uh, I think it's going to be something that's gonna be harder to happen, you know, in the future. So, I will second it, and, uh, with that, I know if it does pass, I will put my, this one, but no one else. Okay, and, uh, I will sign it off on this.
I really appreciate what you're gonna do, and that's what I'm gonna do tonight, if we can, if we can see what we have to say.
I have two copies, so you guys can have one, but I can have one signed as well. And I thank you gentlemen very much, and I fully understand it all, because we have our frustrations as well.
I'm sure.
Okay, on that one, one there?
Yes.
Okay, okay, I can, I can do that.
All right.
I don't know the right pitch on it or something.
They don't matter all.
There are two originals of each thing, so...
So you're gonna make that...
Okay.
You want me to both back?
She can actually have it, she wants it.
Both of them?
Yes, that'll work. Okay, those are her, and then I'll take the grant application, you bid, for the capital.
Well, what's worse, this company we're producing broken, this is the thing they're giving them.
I fully understand.
Yeah, I, I know you know that, uh, people may be watching, they see nothing, but, 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 sometimes, yeah, in the future.
All right, well, I appreciate it very much, thank you.
All right. Next up is the Second County Veterans Service Office Position and Building Inspector Position. I, myself, I'm ready for veterans officers, I'm not one hundred percent ready for civilians, but I'd like to see if we could ask you guys to hold up on that, and what next means of that, I would be with him, but I'm gonna tell, I do, there's a couple things on.
Yeah, I'm gonna catch that.
Are you getting one from that, okay? But I am, uh, good on the...
From the right end, you're still working?
Yeah.
Veteran Service Officer, my nation, I do, so, uh, now, uh, just, I just, uh, will open it up for a, a name, or anybody that might like it, or whoever they want to put in, how's that?
I can tell you that I've had, I'm today, but I'm a, I'm for Denise Vaughn. Uh, not only has she, in my opinion, did a good, uh, application, did a good interview, but I've had numerous, numerous days calling me to say this is... Uh, however, I will say my understanding is the other gentleman that put in for it, just taking the job, or, 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 anyway, I'll make a motion for Denise Vaughn.
All right, so the motion's been made for Denise Vaughn to take over as the Second County Veterans Service Officer, right here a second to that.
Well, that kinda throws a wrench, the last thing John just said there, for the fact that, you know, I don't know that the other guy, I mean, I, my vote could go different ways if I know that he took another job, so...
And I only know that, and I just, I had a, a policeman, Brown, tell me that this morning, so I'm assuming it's true, Mike, I, I couldn't swear, but, uh, you know... But regardless, I, the veterans was a big influence on me, called me.
I could send a text, I wanna know if he did or didn't.
Okay.
So you want, we can move to the minutes, come back to that.
Yeah, I'd rather, I'd rather see if he took a job, it makes a big difference, I'm, I'm, I was there.
All right, all right, we'll come back to that here in just a second. Okay. Your motion's still on the table, okay? And, uh, we'll do the consideration of the minutes from November twentieth, has anybody had a chance to look over again?
Yes, sure.
Did we hear a motion to approve?
I'll make the motion, just a second.
Mike has made the motion, John Sager now unanimous, about the payroll doubt, ratifications for December the twentieth, uh, twenty nineteen, and November the twenty nineteen.
Uh, that's your claims, um, we voted at that meeting, are you, you all voting, um, at, for the November claims ratification, should you not have any injections, Buck Houston suggested that you ratify them at a later meeting, even though we paid them, everything was fine, he doesn't, okay? It's just an official, for that.
Okay. Do we hear a motion to accept the, uh, ratification for the claims of twenty nineteen, November twenty nineteen?
Motion.
And also, uh, the, uh, motion to ratify the twenty, December twentieth, uh, payroll.
Well, I'll second that.
I'm making unanimous.
So that was payroll and, um, claims?
Yes.
By the way, he took the job, I don't know if that would be the other gentleman who had a run for it, he makes a lot of...
I don't know what you mean.
Yeah, I don't know.
FMOA request.
Why the look at it?
Yeah, go on.
If you have any questions, let me know.
I can do this here, I'll sign it. Make a motion, John makes a motion, Mike can say.
Yeah, I second, I don't know why we do those. Half the time they are back and going.
Kind of like tying a cart before the horse sometime, love it.
I mean, I don't know that, I don't know that this board would ever, could ever stop somebody from taking that F M O A. I mean, if you're eligible, then you're eligible.
I, I think it has something to do with just acknowledging that that person is on that time of week. Yeah, and it can be unpaid.
I'm guessing all we can do, maybe investigate, see the tagger.
Yes.
You know, like if I have a doctor, like soon as somebody can't work out, they call a doctor and say, tell me why.
If they, they. The bear of the case is conditionally offered, and that, you got that's a medical, but I'm sure you get that.
Well, we'll back up to the count of actions, like I said, the motion hasn't been made.
At the M L A, I'm so sorry, didn't we have a person second?
Yeah, Mike.
Okay, I'm sorry, I missed it.
No.
Let me say something about that F M O A. When they fill that out, they have to send doctor's information with that F M O A. So, it's not just, hey, I'm gonna fill out a paper and I'm gonna take off. I don't know, 'cause I do it at work all the time, and you have to send doctor's information along with it, so it's not just.
What's the time they give you, and I'll give you the time of that?
It's not a vacation. I, I had a question, doctors, before, before work, and I asked you to back up. And they, well, that person wanted off, so I saw. Not that that would happen, it never hurt to question.
All right.
Make a motion, I'll second the motion.
All right, the motion been second by Mike, who replaced Denise Vaughn in the position of the veteran's officer, and I'll certainly make it unanimous, so.
Congratulations.
Congratulations.
Nice.
Now, we.
You don't know what you got into.
I will say, I will say this, I will agree with John on that. I had several people out in the community that are veterans that spoke very highly of you, so we certainly expect very much from you.
The other thing I'd like to add to this, the district service officer, Julie Vito, did request the opportunity to do an assessment, make sure you've got the skill, did I, I trust you, but if he wants to do that, I think you should, yeah.
Absolutely.
Again, congratulations. All right, I've got something here.
Hang on, which, where she started and all that kind of stuff?
Mine's out of the budget for January one.
I'd say January, I'd say, well, January two.
It's been a kind of an ongoing company.
Yeah, and I think, I, I think we did tell you that she would be allowed a few, a couple weeks if she needed to, to.
Well, and then next week I'll have everything in lock.
She should look up with you probably.
Just come stay with me.
Sounds, sounds good.
Thank you.
I was contacted by the prosecutor, and the deputy prosecutor's office is cleaned out pretty well right now. We'll get a new deputy prosecutor coming in Thursday, I believe it is. I thought this might be a good time to paint. That, is there a possibility we can make that happen between now and then? Don't know if that would.
It's not gonna happen by Thursday. I told Chris that it's.
You don't think it can?
No, I, we've got, with this going in, getting everything lined up with the electric and everything that, I mean, they, they get it put in, but they gotta finish it tomorrow. I've got walkers to hang up down there. I, I don't think we can get it painted by, by Thursday.
Tell me it'll paint.
I just don't see it happening.
I think it would be a little.
I, I can get, I can get trustees to, to, to do it, but then I have to sit in there with them, and that takes me away from all the other buildings that I have to go to. I just don't see it happening by Thursday. Me and, me and Chris talked about it, and I can get, I can get it within a week. I just, there's just no getting it. And we talked about moving some desks out, 'cause there's, if you've been in there, it's a small, it's an itty bitty room, and there's desks, and they're that big. I mean, there don't need to be that big a desk in there, in my opinion. They can, I think they can condense it down. We can move this stuff to the middle, cover it up, and paint it. I've already patched it. I went in there as soon as he told me today, and I patched the holes already. So, I mean, I, I told him I'd get it as quickly as I can, but there's just no possible Thursday. I mean, with us being off, you know, New Year's Day, we got the stuff tomorrow, and then coming back to Thursday. And that's another thing we need to discuss with, we got people moving their offices around without calling me, Tony, or Andrew, and then that is a mess because of trying to go in and move their E threat lines, and if they even have power in that location, and we, there's just no possible, I mean, they need to give us a week notice at least before they move anything around. So, I don't know if we need to send out, me and Andrew's gonna try and get together and hopefully try to send out a claim that says, before you move any desks, you need to make sure it's okay, and you give us a week notice at least. So, that's been a problem the past couple months.
Okay.
But I did talk to Chris, and I told him I'd get it painted as soon as possible. But I told him the first step was, I knew, he wanted it painted, and I said, paint is on you guys, so I'd rather him ask you guys first, which I knew you'd be okay with it. And then he called me immediately, and that was another thing, I didn't know if we wanted, since that was gonna be the first room that was getting painted, we've talked about this in the past, if we wanted to just go back with white, or if we wanted to try color first, to see if that was something we wanted to do. You see what I'm saying? Kind of like a, kind of like a demo room, per se?
Well, let me just say that you work with, on my part, well, you work with Chris, and whatever you gotta do, you did done.
Okay. I'm gonna catch it, you need a bow or something? Is there a color present?
I guess I'm kinda, I'm kinda confused here. That don't take much, but what's, what's, I mean, we have two maintenance people, I mean, what's, what's, if you're doing stuff with the security, what's the other guy doing? I mean, that's, I know he's your boss, but I, I'm just kinda curious, you're, you're in fifteen places, and I'm wondering what, I mean, I'm just lost.
Yeah, that's funny, I'm not relating to that, I'm trying to, I talked to him a while back about you working over at the courthouse, and he said he'd be fine with that, and he said he could handle this over here. So, I don't have the answer for, I mean, I'm not.
He's saying he has to be in three places, 'cause there's, and he can't paint the room, and.
Well, don't get me wrong, I don't get called to.
I understand, but it, if that room is as small as I think it is, I mean, somebody can paint it in about two hours. I mean, if that, I mean, but I'm, I'm concerned about where our manpower's at, what somebody else is doing if you're running all of that stuff, so. Paint is.
We've been talking about just putting over, working on sheriff.
Yeah, but it's never been.
Well, I mean, I'm okay with that, that's what I'm trying to say, he'll have to do it over here, he said he can do it all. Okay, I threw that out there.
Well, the thing about it is, if he comes out of here and goes over there, then the sheriff can assume his budget or his wages and his benefits.
Yeah.
'Cause we're not gonna, we're not gonna assume that, and, and him taking him over there, and then.
And, you know, I told you guys a bunch, and I'll, and I'll even, it, it's never, it didn't happen this last year, when they talked about it, when the past sheriff brought it up, about putting a full-time maintenance man over there. Doesn't need it, absolutely, absolutely, it is a full-time man. Every jail should have a full-time maintenance man. There's no, no doubt about it. It, you, they, that's a twenty-four seven building that people live in. That's their home, it's full, but that's not, I'm not, that's not on you guys. You guys have been, yes, it needs one, you guys know it needs one. I don't know if that needs to be something that's discussed with, as in me or whoever coming in and talking to council. I don't know if that has anything to do with it, of them trying, you know.
The sheriff, Lane presented.
Well, I think they have.
And he has, I mean, Dan McLane presented.
Candid, I mean, they.
I honestly believe that you, they probably do need a full-time maintenance guy there. Uh, but again, it, it, that, that'd have to go through the council, and the council switching the money.
They denied it, yeah, they denied it again for next year, so is that not correct?
As far as I know, there was nothing in the budget for maintenance.
Yeah, but they asked for it, they asked.
Personnel at the jail.
So, I'm not saying, and I mean, quite honestly, it's, and I'm not saying something negative here, but I mean, it's working the way it is, 'cause you can still go over there anytime you, they need somebody. But I understand, it does need a full-time person.
It just needs to be kept up, maintenance stuff.
Well, that's the same thing here, and that's why, you know, I've been here three years, and I've asked for preventive maintenance forms for every operational thing we have here, and I've yet to see them. You know, so, you know, are we maintaining the building that we, that we own? Or are we just waiting for something to break, and then say, well, we gotta spend X amount of thousands of dollars to repair something? So, you know, there ought to be a form that tells somebody, hey, um, once a month, you're walking past a fire station, sure you're walking past an elevator, you're walking past any kind of mechanical machinery, and saying, I've checked it, and it's full of oil, and it's greased, and, and its filter's been changed. But again, three years, and I haven't seen the first report, so, but anyway, that's enough of that. But paint the room. Paint it blue.
That color I've reminded you of?
Paint it however Chris wants it painted.
I'm with you on that.
If you work with him.
He wants it purple, paint it purple.
I don't know. I don't have to sit in there.
All right, anything on your part?
I do have something, I think, as I walked in, I felt Andrew and Josh a little bit. It looks like security's getting ninety percent there, so, um, I, I, I saw the things on the doors, heard people walking through metal detectors, so I think that's, that's a positive, and I think, again, a three-year project. Actually, probably three and a half, 'cause it started four hours when I've been here, so, so the wheel moves real slow, sometimes backs up a little bit.
Did you notice the new cameras outside of the building? So you don't stick out like big sword bombs to.
I saw the cameras, saw the cameras inside, they all, it all looks good, and again, I think we need to put a notice out to all the employees that, the east side of the building over here is not a parking lot for all employees, 'cause they're gonna, they're gonna, when you get close to the door, they're gonna walk in, especially this time of the year with bad weather, but I know Mr. Chris has already contacted me, you know, a couple months ago, about complaining about people parking in front of all these buildings over here, so. And also, I don't know if this is gonna affect us whatsoever, but we have a new mayor, gonna start next, or begin this weekend. His thoughts might be a little different about the parking around the courthouse, 'cause it is city parking. I know he contacted me a year or so ago about people parking in front of his building over here, so I know how his thoughts are, and they may be a little different now that he's got a thumb on it, so. We may be finding some additional parking someplace for county employees, so.
Certainly looking, I agree with that. I think it can be done in here.
And the last thing I do have, and I know that I got, I received an email from Bob about it, about that appraisal. I think, I, I know it's not on the agenda, so we'll just, I just wanna know if we bring up the next meeting or something, so. Something, whether we have to vote on it, or talk about it, or be presented with it, or whatever, so.
Yeah. I will say that to the back of what Mike's saying here is, is that Sheriff has met with pretty well all apartment heads at this point inside the building here, and there's all those live Thursday morning. So, you know, he is, John's doing pretty well for them, what they need to do. And I think at this point, the badges, they certainly need to be applied by bringing them. And also talking about keys and cell phones and things of that nature, and they wanna change whatever, or try to carry in some baggie or something, whether you throw it in there, and not, if it is an expedite process of getting through the door. And again, this is something that goes live come January the second here in the courthouse. Certainly, I'm like you, I'm certainly glad to see it's finally got here. I don't know that it will always be at the east door, but I know that it's, no place that we could go for now. So, this could be subject to change in the future through the front door or whatever, but for now, it is the east door, so.
I'm with you, and I, I've had serious concerns I can have aside. And we do have some architects who have looked at it, and are gonna present something to us, whether we wanna take it or not. About these, for me, there's some opportunities we may throw up. I don't know, do you know when they're gonna come?
I've gotten them in January fifteenth folder, I'm gonna contact them, bring them down, and see if they can just kind of introduce themselves to you all. It doesn't have the apartment board, so we can start there and talk to them, and go, or jump and come off the front if we want to. Just see, at least they can kind of interview a little bit. I told myself something that doesn't cost us any money.
So far, yeah.
Yeah, so far, nothing, don't want anything that's gonna cost us money. And that's gonna bring me to a question for you gentlemen, if you don't care for your January fifteenth meeting. Reminder that you could possibly have two meetings that day, you have one at ten thirty to open the bids for Community Crossings, Grant Mines, and maybe possibly your annual bids that day. And then, that's my question, do you want to schedule two meetings that day? Or do you want me to just do the bid opening, and get that particular open and out of the way, and then write up that, or do your regular agenda items that day? Or do you want to meet twice that day? That's up to you all.
I'd rather do the prior ten to the five o'clock meeting.
Well, Jill advertised, and see at the time that she did it, she advertised it for ten thirty.
Oh, so you're saying get it ten thirty, and then go after the regular meeting?
Then at five, yeah, but I'm, I'm suggesting ten thirty, and then do the bids, and then go to regular meeting, like you said.
I'd rather do that, come back, plus you, whatever you guys want.
I'm okay, I think I'm okay with it.
So, we'll just stay with the day meeting, and then you get started?
I'm okay with you guys, so I just wanna, don't forget your help.
Three o'clock.
Yeah, one more quick thing.
Okay.
We talked about this a while back, about the inner unit property.
Yes.
And we, basically, we kind of agreed with him, maybe just on the cost. If, if we're gonna have a break, go out and clean that up for us and his group, I think they'll probably run that, I don't think we voted on it yet. And I would like to do that, I'm for that, and two, the only way I know of giving any kind of cost figures if we still wanna do that, is asking to look at, and I did have a fence builder ask me to look at, and it's cricket. James, he built, he doesn't, he's any, go and look at it with me. I'm just throwing that out, if you guys are okay with that, in terms of direction.
I'm, I'm, I'm okay, I'm okay with the, with you guys choosing that for training, and, and I think.
And make sure to bring our insurance form and how you file it.
I'm, I'm okay with that, but here, here's one thing, and I've not, maybe I'd like to see it myself, I don't know as far as the paint. But here's, I can, you know, I, I know, I know that law very, very well. And Indiana State law says that we are required, that we are required to build and maintain one half of that fence. And at that point, there isn't a law that requires us to build all the fence through there at this time. If that fence is usable, and now, if it is our end of the fence, and, and his cattle do get out, whatever, then at that point, we might be liable.
So, what's consider our end?
Uh, the law says that you face your neighbor at the middle of your property, you take to the right, neighbor takes to the right, and that's your end of the property. So, if this is, this is, this is, this is the property here that runs down through here, and you, we own here, and he owns here, then we would come to the middle, and he would come to the middle. This is his end, and that's our end.
Okay, the issue I have is that he said he went off the property line, so the fence, there's property, um, his, he's got property on the other side of the fence to our property line.
That's, and, and that's, that there, I think, I, I'm gonna tell you, that's probably a legal question, because in the, in the state of Indiana, whoever maintains that, I mean, it could, you could actually lose ground. You could actually lose or gain ground on that, if through years. I don't have a problem with it, I know why he done it, but it would, I would think that there should be something, a right that would protect that.
If we're not going to do what we said in the email, at least it gives an education, and that would.
Yeah, and again, I think the clearing is, is something that, that needs to be done. Again, I don't know about the fence, I don't know how bad the shape of the fence is.
What I did the last time, what I did the last time when this happened, the county highway guys went down there and stretched the fence back up, and put another post down between his two posts. So, if we have to go down and put, put it up and do that again, to me, the fence is up. I mean, and he complained that we put a piece of cheap fence in there, it's his fence.
Was it a wire fence?
Yeah, it's a wire.
Is it woven wire?
Yeah, it's a wire.
Well, actually, when I'm playing that, I.
'Cause it's his fence, and he said, well, you put a cheap piece of fence in there, nobody, you know, we put the same fence you put, we just put it back up.
Yeah, and I'm kinda like saying, I can't see if all that is meant to use, use cobras and.
We, actually, I don't know if they even put a wood post in, I think they put a metal, custom metal steel.
I have to look.
I don't have a problem, I think, and I appreciate Greg, the team, and what they're doing, 'cause that's gonna save us a bunch of money.
It just makes sense to clear it back away from there, because that way, it's not gonna fall on the fence. But as far as the fence itself, I think we'd like, probably take a look at that, which I don't affect you none.
But the other part is.
Probably.
You have a problem, Chris?
No, I have no problem whatsoever.
What should I tell him to look for, though, just how much damage there is, or what?
You know, I think at that point, you know, again, is, is, you know, what shape is, what kind of shape is the wire in? Is the wire opposed to, you know, maybe it's be something that you can put another brace or two in, and re-stretch the wire, and if it's good wire, you know, it could be there, you know, woven wire, you know, honestly, woven wire, I don't know when that was last built, but woven wire should last twenty, twenty-five years.
It's pretty new.
That's what I'm saying, I mean, now, you know, if Cal runs into it, scratches it, you gotta go back and re-stretch it, that kind of stuff. But if it's wire itself's in good shape, I mean, I, I don't have a problem fixing it.
I think it would just re-draft it on.
Yeah, so I think at that point, it may be something that we may need to re-stretch or whatever, but, and if it needs to, we'll do that, but I think we need to look at that.
And in my mind, I can't imagine all that is meant to.
Oh, no. Art, yeah, art, that's gonna be, you know, again, you know, whatever it is, is how, you know, 'cause we're, we're in, that's what Indiana State law says, that you're required one end of it. And so at that point, and that's just down to, you know, wherever, you know, if, again, you know, if, if, I don't know how that is up there, let's assume that our property is all by.
It's crap. Because the road tracks are over here, and it goes this way, and it goes back and curves this way, and does this bit.
Oh, yeah?
Oh, yeah.
Well, that's.
And then the monument's here. So, it, it makes a big curve out there, it's not a.
Straight shot.
Straight shot.
Okay.
Why wouldn't you be talking about it, I'm gonna talk about it in a meeting in a town.
I mean, wait for this stuff to get put aside.
And we've got, we've got liability.
We have, I think.
As landowners.
They're letting over and over.
As landowners, we certainly have a liability to do that, so we wanna make sure we do what we need to do legally. But it may not be just a, a bill of all the defense, it may be just redo what's there, and, 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 you know, takes care of the problem for a hundred twenty years, we don't know that, but, but cricket one on, I, I trust you.
The other part that, were we getting somebody to go out and mark some trees?
Yeah, that's what I was gonna say, that's the only thing we're waiting on right now, is for Tom Springsteen, and I think he's gonna maybe get with Forest Tree, somebody down there, to go and mark the trees. But with it getting ready to be freezing time, I'm not gonna go out and run a chainsaw, I don't agree with it, 'cause I'm fat, old, and cold.
Well, you'll warm up.
I will, but give you a little bit of.
Let, let me tell you what.
Wait till summertime, and it'll be, you're not gonna be cold.
I'm gonna tell you this, I would, certainly does run that chainsaw in this type of weather, as it July, and you, and it's always fun when you, when you, when you stick that chainsaw in there, and yellow jackets come out. Now, you know, that's what I really like.
We like late February, that's about the time we're really good at chainsawing.
I understand, I understand, but we do appreciate what you're doing.
You're training for us.
And, so, yeah, we'll take care of the rest. All right, Marty, do you have anything to add?
Uh, no, I'm pleased to say that we've gotten approval to destroy really, really old records down there in the Plan Commission, and we're going to try to clean up at least a wall.
Okay.
It, they've just been stacked there for years, and they're of no use to us, and we're going back to nineteen sixty-nine.
All right, well, nobody else, how about you, I never asked you, and I'm gonna ask you, do you have anything?
I appreciate that, and you guys spurred me up on this January the fifth meeting, I have the one meeting, I think.
I'm better than me.
Sounds good to me, too.
All right, I'll entertain a motion, say it, Joe?
I'll make one.
Second. We're out of here, thank you all.
We're done.
Thanks, guys.
And I'll get you guys signed on it, because you don't mind.